A regular meeting of the Swanson Board of Selectmen today, January 4th is called to order.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes at December 28th.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Anything to add, Michael?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have anybody on line, Josh?
Just Mike, Jasmine, and Beth.
Either wish to participate in the public input portion?
I think for me.
Julius?
Well, I'm good for now.
All right.
Actually, I do have something, Bill. I don't know if you guys noticed, but the Sentinel has an article about Hope Avenue, not the DOT not allowing the town to have a change in the miles per hour of speed limit. It's in the Sentinel tonight.
Front page.
Boy, they're desperate for news, aren't they?
And so I'd like to...
Thank you.
Like to let everybody know that Paul Burrell-Lombia passed away, which is a long time detective in the police department, and retired from fishing game, I believe, lived in town for a long time.
First item is nomination for Eileen to the Golden Grange Advisory Committee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Joyfully. You look so spiffy tonight.
Well, I feel spiffy tonight.
You're excusing that enthusiasm.
January 8th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chief Ghul, welcome.
How are you doing?
Good. How you doing, other than one?
Great day.
You got the colored ones right there, Bill.
No, I was just looking for the budget.
Oh, you've got the big one here if you want it. Oh, you have it. Oh, came prepared.
Except it didn't print out very well.
Uh-oh.
The gray is really gray. It's ghostly. Is this just my copy?
That's your copy.
Well, it's apparent that you all have made quite an effort to give us some options to consider. Do you want to run through them individually?
Yeah, the only, really, the change was, well Julius obviously did a lot of work and Mike on this in helping us get to this point. So, pretty self-explanatory on the scheduling. So, option one would be, you know, the most hours covered, and continue where we are, where we are right now, as far as working, using per diem members on the weekend, paid on call, and again, we would extend their coverage by part-time or per diem. Option two reduces the daily coverage. Again, we're using paid-on call, which would have people standing by. We're using what, $50 an hour?
Yeah, or $50 a day, kind of have both, but could do either one.
And option three was suggested by Sly, was to eliminate the weekend per diems, and actually eliminating any coverage by part-time or per diem, and just go paid-on call, which I don't think that would be too beneficial, especially on the weekends, trying to get people to cover those days. At least the days are covered on weekends. But those are the options that have been going over the past couple of weeks.
Were the wages stacked or whatever?
No, we didn't want to, no.
Shouldn't make too much difference.
Correct. It would be consistent between the options, so I figured versus changing everything, I just left it consistent.
Now, the, the, A, B, C, and D. Is it in the order with which they appear?
So, yeah, the order that he just reflected, correct. So, this is the current staffing that we have right now.
Yep.
And that's the option one that he, or, yeah, that's the option one right, right here.
Yep.
That's the option one that we presented last week. And this is the one that we kind of, Julius kind of spitball from home. We were asking, well, what if we took out the weekend per diem coverage? So, then it's just the on-call the weeknights.
Okay, and then the last one?
That was Sly's suggestion, suggestion last week of removing the per diem weekends and just doing the on-call overnight and then on the weekend days.
How would, how could you, could you help me understand the paid-on call? What is that?
So, somebody, an example, you know, somebody lived in close proximity of a fire station or within town, they would get paid roughly, you know, we'll start at $50 an hour, say. So, for 10-hour overnight, it's like $50. Just to stand by, that means that if something does come in, that they're obligated to respond. And then, once they respond, it'll go to their current rate for the hours spent.
Sure. And they'll stay close, sober, and available.
I know that was when, when one of the fire people made the comment about being on-call for their job, that's the way I understood it as well, so.
Right. Yeah, that's the way some, you know, maintenance oil companies or so forth, an emergency response, if they have to respond after hours, some of the oil companies use that, to have their drivers be fit for duty, close in proximity to come in. Obviously, we're a little different in emergency response. So, I mean, it's definitely a step in the right direction as far as staffing goes, a little more incentive to get people to stand by, as opposed to voluntary, you know, the way we have it right now. So, you know, you're not sure who's available at what time.
So, each day, Monday through Friday, we'd be paying two people the equivalent of $50, so $100 a day for Monday through Friday. And then, how are we working Saturday and Sunday?
So, well, I prefer to keep it as we're doing now, the weekend shifts, we were going to extend the weekend shift to 12 hours. And then, as per diem, per diem shift, that's what we're doing right now. People are staffed at the station for that 12 hours, and then it would be paid-on call after that for the weekend nights.
So, it would essentially be seven days, $100 a day?
That's what we're looking at.
And that's with the per diem on Saturday and Sunday?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to, so we got, we're mixing between options a little bit. So, what we had last week was, we didn't have, we had just voluntary for the weekends, because the thought was more people around, more people aren't working. So, that was, I mean, we could obviously add the on-call feature, too, but the option one did not have that. The option that we talked about last week would have just paid-on call for the weekend, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm mistaken, yeah. So, the nights after the 12-hour block would be voluntary on-call, so.
Do I understand that, but we, you did have, just to be sure, we did have, the first option did have this, right, the part-time per diem?
Correct.
I'm just asking for the part that would be voluntary.
So, that would be like how we do it now, just whoever's...
Well, no, but if we did that part as paid-on call, then every day would be $100, right?
We could do it, yes.
I'm just asking the question.
Yes, we could do it.
Every day would be $100, and then you have that 12-hour block on Saturday and Sunday that would be the per diem, so it'd be sort of a hybrid.
Correct.
$1,400 for the on-call weekends.
You got the big one coming, or?
No, no, no.
10,400. 10,400 to add on this figure. It'd be $69,700 if you'd covered, if you put these people paid-on calls.
Right, okay.
Basically, each day of on-call, you figure at $50 bucks, yeah, it's like $5,200 a year, or $100 a week. So, each day you add or subtract is $5,200 for the on-call. If you do it as the straight $50 shift.
Also, you know, besides, too, the reason for doing this is that...
You probably want to come up here, because the president will probably can't see it.
We made sure we calculated at this rate, too, so that we're in compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act as well, which is kind of one of the things that this is the closest we can get to a part-time position without actually going and taking that extra leap, because otherwise, you can't guarantee those individuals will be there. That's the on-call portion, but offering them some level of incentive to stay. So, you know, I worked with Edna, and we're going to work with Teresa, obviously, as well, if this is approved, to make sure that that coincides, but that's where we're at.
I lost you at the beginning. I thought they were going to go in one direction.
No, just wanted to make sure that it was clear that that's, that's the reason why we chose the numbers that we did in this particular case, is that it would allow us to be in compliance with the, with the Fair Labor Standards Act, which is, you know, we want to make sure that we had that step, so that we weren't, you know, underpaying or overpaying that kind of particular case. Because once you reach so many hours in each individual point, then you take that leap, and you can't do that. So, I don't want to get in the weeds on this one, but maybe I am...
We don't have to meet minimum wage?
Not for the on-call, correct. Correct.
Right, it's a stipend per day, it's not per hour.
Exactly, it's not an hour, hour, hour.
Which one of these represents that?
So, for all of them, for the paid-on call, it could be the 50 per shift. At one point, we talked about five per hour, but I think it was like a 10-hour shift, so it was just kind of our way of thinking about it. But the stipend seems like the better angle for the Fair Labor Standards Act perspective, which I think was the board's preference.
And again, which one of these represents that?
Anything in pay.
Yep, so that would be a $50 overnight shift on-call.
Well, to start.
So, Bill, what is the benefit of having the per diem for Saturday and Sunday as opposed to filling those hours with the paid-on call?
I think it'd be more reliable to have the staffing there, as opposed to weekends relying on people to give up their weekend days to stand by, because, you know, their plans wouldn't, you know, wouldn't have to be staying close to the station to respond. So, I think maybe this time of year, might get lucky, but we're relatively successful with the per diem program, so I'd like to continue that, making sure that there's at least two people there to respond. So, once the, once the warm weather comes, summertime comes, I don't think that's going to be easily fulfilled. They'll go shifts.
And they work on things like when we eliminated the separate janitorial staff, they clean the stations, they, they do truck checks, check fuel for equipment, there's other stuff they do.
Yeah, they do, yeah, minor maintenance and cleaning and so forth, so, yeah, it's, they do serve that purpose as well.
And if I may include as well, I think that by having these part-time positions during the weekends, weekends are the hardest shifts, you know, average, out of all the days to fill. And so, right now, if we're just doing it with on-call individuals, we found that we can't get individuals that are on-call to want to take those particular shifts in this scenario. And so, having the part-times, you can guarantee not only that they do not need to be the on-call individuals that are located locally, per diem folks can spread further outwards. And so, those folks can come in, stay at the station for the day at the shift that they're working, which gives us further options for employment. I think that's what we wanted to have decided as well.
So, they're physically here?
Yes.
And these stipend situations, individuals anticipated to be spread through the three stations?
For the most part, we operate out here because of the ambulance, you know, primarily for EMS, but regardless, or I guess would be, you know, where the, where the district would be, where the call would be, they could respond to, whatever station, respond out of there quarterly. So, that's, you know, that kind of has to be adjusted, I guess, if you will, because we're not doing that right now. So, members of those stations come into their own stations right now as calls come in, but if we have people standing by, it, you know, it kind of hinges on EMS, too. So, if they're EMS certified, and they're going to respond in, usually come, come respond into where the ambulance is. So, it's, it's not an exact, I can't give you an exact answer on that right now, because there's so many variables between certification with driving, what levels of certification are up there, EMS certification. Is it a fire call, is it an EMS call? So, primarily, I would say they would come here, but if, if it's something that's feasible to respond to one of the other stations, you use one of those apparatus, and certainly, they can respond to there.
They can, but in terms of the people who are being compensated to be available, would it, would it be distributed through the companies?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, sure. Yeah, it'd be set up as a rotating schedule, people, just like we do now. So, the per diem shifts are available to all the members, the Saturday and Sunday shifts. There's only a small few that work regularly those shifts, but the paid-on call would go in a rotating basis, and it's available to anyone.
Yeah, and you could have an overnight where someone's, someone's on-call from Station 1 in the east, and someone's on-call from Station 2 in center, and when the call comes in, they either, they each go to their own station, or would they go to whichever's closer?
Yeah, not, I mean, that's kind of a tough question right now for geographical and logistics. Again, it depends on what the situation is. If it's brush fire, they can both go to Station 2 and grab a brush. If it's an ambulance call, and they're both EMS providers, and then they go to Station 3 and get the ambulance. So...
Which is basically how it is now. You just don't know who's necessarily on the call.
Right, so without, yeah, without identifying, others would be on that call, and the spec, you know, the specify what individual, what their level of training and certification is, it's hard to answer that right now. But the obvious thing would be it's open to all members, of course.
Do we, just as a practical matter, do we have that kind of dispersment, dispersment throughout the stations, people that are EMS certified and firefighter certified, do we, do we have that available in every station?
No, Station 2, there's no EMS certified personnel currently. Station 3, there's 16 providers throughout the department, so there's split between Station 1 and Station 3, and the, or chief officers.
And what?
And the chief officers are EMS. So, the two part-time, two full-time are EMS.
Would they count it in the 16, or?
They're counted in the 16.
Okay, that's all my questions. Sorry.
That's all right.
You must have a couple.
Well, no, the only thing that I want to make sure is that my original statement way back when is carried out. And is that basically this option?
It's adding in the on-calls overnight on the weeknights, correct.
Okay, then I would support this.
Not this, but what you would support would be, if I understand it correctly, would be the green, the yellow, and the remainder being pink.
Yeah.
Which is, is it, it's closest, I think, to Sly's request here, would this portion be per diem? Or if you look at this one and just color the white, pink.
Jeez, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and I haven't said a lot.
Yet.
Yet. But we've, we've got to do something, and it's got to be done now. End of story.
Ten words?
Ten words.
Very poignant words.
But, you know, I mean, we've beaten a dead horse to death.
It's already dead, and we're killing it somewhere.
We're killing it somewhere. So, as far as I'm concerned.
So, we're looking at option two, then?
To be...
To, to be amended.
To be, yeah.
And I think it's up to the chief to make sure that it works.
It should be an additional cost of $69,773.60, adding $10,400 to the...
I think it was, wasn't it, it was $5,200 a day, so I have 36.
10,400.
50 a day times 2, that's 5,200, that's 52 weeks.
But you have two days, Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
So, it's $10,400.
But you can subtract out the additional part-time wages, because if we're not extending the weekend coverage.
So, what's weekend going to be, 7:30 to 5:30?
Eight to four, I think, is what Ken was talking about.
The additional 12 hours, two times two shifts, two days of the weekend, is that right? Because you're taking those whites and making them pink?
Well, that's what I thought we were doing, but now I think that's changing.
Maybe not, maybe I misunderstood. I thought, I thought we were keeping the weekend...
I thought we were just throwing the volunteer on-call and the paid-on call and adding $10,400 to it. No?
I must have misunderstood.
Well, now is the time not to be misunderstood. Now is the time to take the bull by the horn, or by the tail, and face the situation at hand.
I agree.
Okay? We've got to start somewhere. We've got to start doing something tonight. I, for one, want it done on the table now. Cut through the bullshit, guys.
You do have a filter on that, right, Josh?
The FCC has got nothing on that.
No.
Public access, come on.
That's right, yeah. It's supposed to be edgy.
Hey, Michael, when the board decides that what they're going to do, would you just spell it out clearly so that I can record it properly?
Hopefully.
Will we? No, you'll know.
Come on, I'm ready to go on to the next situation, which is solar. So, you know, with that in mind, let's make a decision.
Any way of funding it, as far as there's an 11% increase in the budget for the department? Could we get that down to seven?
No.
Well, other than my option three is what I would go for, that $7,000 increase. We have the option of going to the town meeting and having the people know on the budget, the operating budget.
Yep.
And then, we're going to be in the default budget, and then we're going.
And every year, somebody throws that out, and I've said for 24 years, 23 years, that if you tell the people exactly what you're doing, they're going to support you. So, I don't, you know, until, until we, we find that the people are turning around the budget and using the default, I don't buy it.
The other option, which my colleague to my left probably wouldn't like, but it gets to the discussion we've kind of had about having a community discussion about this, is to have it as a separate war article, then that fails or succeeds on its own, and it becomes a discussion opportunity like we had with the Carpenter Home, and Grange Hall, and with the mall, and different stuff.
Yep.
We are a low number of articles this year, boss, so.
Yeah.
So, that takes that factor out of it.
I mean, guys, I want to cut through the BS. I want a decision...
There's really not any BS here, Ken.
Yes, there is.
No, there isn't. This is a legitimate discussion. It's a significant change. We're looking at going from $440,000 to $512,000, and that's, that's significant. I agree with Sly. I think if we can, if we can find some items in the budget that would soften the blow, I think that's valuable. I also agree with Michael that putting it on as a warrant article, so the voters make the decision, do you want to have additional coverage? I also look at it from the perspective that we, we just appointed this committee to come back with a report, that some part of that is going to be whether we go with all fire, all fire department recommendation, or continue with the, with the combined service that we have. So, I don't think it's BS. I...
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's legitimate discussion to be had. It's a, and I sympathize with where you're at, and I sympathize with where Sly's at. So, you know, maybe the thing is to come up with a solution that we think is best and put it on the warrant, or defer to the committee comes back, because we're only talking eight months, and...
Sure.
Who knows? The committee, if the committee comes back and recommends we don't need an EMS, to be an EMS provider, which is what, what, you know, Sly is proposing, then, then all of this will be moved anyway, if, if we're going to abide by what the committee, committee suggests. So, if we're looking for a compromise, for me, it would be put it on the ballot.
Well, and I'm not arguing that point. I failed to agree or disagree with what Mike is suggesting, okay? But if you, if you want to put it on the ballot, that's fine with me. But, but, but I want this done and over with.
No, I get it, but at the same time...
No, you don't.
Yeah, I do, because we want to make sure that what we're proposing is, we're all in agreement with it, it's cohesive, it's, it brings in what Bill's asking for. We just want to make sure that whatever decision we make to put on the ballot is what we all agree to. So, I don't think we do a rush to judgment. I think we agree, it sounds like we're, it's somewhat of an agreement, to go ahead with the, the increase of, what would it be, 63, no, $49,400, something like that?
No, $69,773.60.
Okay, so we, $70,000.
Depending on if you want to adjust that coverage per diem on the weekend, or leave it the same number of calls. They were talking about shortening this, and that paid-on call would be a little different.
Just to make the on-call shifts consistent, and it gets the total cost down.
But if that takes away from the per diems, you know, they might squat on it or something. Right now, what, $12?
Right now, they're eight-hour shifts.
The per diem weekends?
The per diems are proposed right now at 12. They're currently acting as eight. So, this is an additional four to cover that, that timeframe that we saw in the data.
Okay. So, it wouldn't be as much if you take away the...
That's where, that's where I was, yeah, that's where I was talking about.
Gotcha. Good, yeah, I think that'd be good.
And I, the only thing I'll say to Bill's point about, you know, depending on what the committee comes back... the committee comes back, I don't think, if, if we find paid-on-call works better, that could carry through whether we're EMS or not. So I think it's a worthy exercise.
Of course it is.
Come on, Ken, cut through the BS.
Yeah, exactly.
So we're, we're looking at option two.
Two.
With the white painting, paint?
Yep.
And, and we're going to stay consistent with the paid-on-call. Every day is going to be a hundred dollars a day, and on Saturday and Sunday, they'll have a few less hours than they would on Monday through Friday.
No, because the per diem is going to go back to what it actually gives. It's not going to.
Oh, it's going to go back to the hours?
Yeah. So we extended it to cover the.
So there.
That helps, gets the cost down.
So on the weekends, we're, we're actually going to go to sixty bucks, or whatever it comes out to, seventy bucks, I guess, right? Because you're saying five dollars an hour or fifty bucks for ten hours?
It'll be fifty bucks just to take them.
Just be an extra, extra hour.
It's going to go all the way across, just the extra hours on part-time. Go back to that.
Yeah, it'll, yeah, exactly like that. So the white's all pink. We'll just be going white.
All right, so what's this gap? Is it two hours or one hour? I'm just trying to.
I think, I think.
Weekends, I think, would be the more difficult one to, to fill on the, on the paid-on-call.
That's exactly correct.
So if they're working more hours.
Expectation is probably more in that sense. That's what you're saying.
What if we just add on an hour, and then that makes it consistent that it ends at five, and?
Just run the numbers on that.
And have it ready for Tuesday.
Be ready before that.
Thank God.
Got that, Beverly?
Discussion.
No.
Discussion of policy.
Yeah, I'll, help me clean it up in a minute.
Okay, so are you comfortable with that, Bill?
Yes.
Yep.
So if I understand correctly, the board voted for option three, is that correct?
No, it's.
Two B.
Two B.
I'll just say it.
Two B.
Or not to be, that is the question.
Yeah, there, there isn't, there isn't an actual option that we voted for. It's, it's a, a change in option number two.
Oh, okay.
Or it's a modification of, of option number two.
Michael sent it to you when it's up.
Okay, I'll have to discuss it in the mic later. Thank you.
Thank God.
There is a God. All right, what do we have now?
Um, so, there's, we're, just one more question with the budget. A couple of weeks ago, we, I proposed, um, Deputy Chief West is a full-time position. I'm not sure if the board is, uh, what their consideration is on that.
I think we're disappointed about the lack of flexing the schedules, and I think that just makes it a tough sell to add that cost if we're not expanding the amount of time that's being covered.
Uh, that works within the, in the daytime. So you want that administratively adds more to our capabilities, response, have a paramedic on duty, five days a week. So. That was in the original proposal, that he would, he'd be working as a day worker, considered a day worker, so.
It's a full-time status that just kills it for me with the amount of funding for the group to retirement.
I mean, I can't understand it, you know, the fiscal, you know, background within involved, but obviously we need more people. You know, we're talking about this here now, and, um, I, I, I mean, it was my understanding, he was not promised, but there was an understanding that it was, that position was going to be made full-time.
Not by this board.
No.
I've been here since 2016, so I actually took my EMTs last for them again.
I think that's something that would probably be moot if, depending on what the committee came back with. So I think that would be something that, to give them, to create a full-time position that in however long, might change the course of the department.
Doesn't sound too promising. All right, this here.
Thank you for working on this, Bill. Thank you.
Thanks. We love this guy.
Thank you, Julius.
Thank you, guys.
I'll see if you can go two for two then.
Julius, solar exemption modification.
All right.
So did you have a chance to resort that?
Yes, I have it right here.
Thanks for putting that information together.
So this is the same info, it just, it's just Cheshire County on here?
Yeah, so that, that was actually a good call. It really is shrinking it down, because that list is, like you saw, it's a five-page list, all two-hundred-and-twenty-four towns in the state, plus it includes every chartered, you know, like, mountain range, and it includes. I think the biggest thing about the shortened list is you'll notice that there is only four different communities on this list currently. It does not have a solar exemption, exemption of some kind. I guess you can get, maybe include Marlowe in there, because they don't record the cost, but they also do record the number of exemptions. So what we found is it's, every town is doing their systems a little bit differently. Uh, but we did reach out to, uh, there's a local administrator email thread, and we sent out a request saying what other communities are doing. And so we received a response back from ten, almost ten different locations, Hopkinton, Mount Vernon, Peterborough, and so on. Uh, and so Hopkinton does the twenty, uh, twenty-five. Uh, Mount Vernon, a hundred percent. Peterborough does not assess theirs. Uh, Lindenboro, Francis Town, Antrim, Wilton, Fitzwilliam, and Milford all do a hundred percent. So reaching out to different locations, this is the, I'd say, within the timeframe we had as well, this is what we could put together. We do see that the, I mean, almost, roughly about sixty percent of all towns across the state have some level of exemption, uh, and then this is a good representation of the region where almost everybody does. I think that's kind of the, the main highlights from this particular numbers that we pulled together. Um, yeah, so I'll do that then.
Other than Fitzwilliam, did you get a chance to check with any of the Cheshire County towns with, with what their exemption is?
So Jeff had responded and didn't make it to this list, and they kept theirs at a ten, and they assessed at ten, is that correct?
Yeah, so it's a hundred percent offset.
So theirs is a hundred percent as well.
So regardless of the array, it's a ten thousand dollar assessment?
Correct. Yep.
Is, is there, in, in order to address what Sly is, I think, quite rightly concerned about somebody generating essentially a commercial operation, is there anything in the statute or in the language that would give, uh, give us the ability to go to the particular property in question?
Seventy-two sixty-two is the RSA for, for defining a solar panel, or what that piece is. It is very open in its language, and it just states the assessment of a solar array. So anything from, you know, small solar panels to an industrial-sized one. The biggest thing is that whenever we actually, or the proposed warrant article states, is it's on a residential structure, and it's intended for residential use. I think that's the big case right there, is that if anything is deemed a commercial piece, kind of the language you see in planning, that's whenever they would see a separation where commercial would not be included.
So we, we, we would have the ability to have our assessor go to, to a property if it was in question?
Absolutely, and be able to, basically to check out the site and say, houses on lots, individuals living on lots, solar is provided for this particular location, and then that's how that would be assessed accordingly.
Okay, and they, they determine that the, the value of the solar is substantially higher than what would, it is not higher than it. Do they then have the ability to require, in order for that exemption to be.
To be imposed.
To require evidence that the, the solar usage is actually specific to that residence, and that they're not generating additional power of a significant amount, obviously, of a significant amount that, that makes it a commercial enterprise?
Yeah, I'd be concerned as to having the assessor be the one to fully make that determination. I'm not sure how you would.
I think you could do it between the, because part of the application, the building permit and the credit for the exemption, talks about the size and basically based on how much it generates, right? So I think you could compare that to the ever-source bills. They show a year back of usage, and if they're, they have a system that generates a megawatt, and they're using ten percent of a meg, you know, thousand, a hundred kilowatts or whatever the math is, you could say, clearly, this is way more than your usage. So I think that would be a way to.
That's actually a really good point, because our building permit very explicitly has a section in it that says this is the intent of the structure, and the intent of the structure is used for residential use, in the case of solar. So that emphasis.
Only in.
Correct. That's, that's the emphasis portion of it. And so if that terminology is stated, and we do find that it's deemed differently, then they're violating the building permit. So I think that could be the caveat and the funny peach, that we need to determine what is that difference.
Exactly.
Set that in code, then, basically, say, an allowable percentage of the construction, and then send that to the assessor.
I think you'd probably see most of those differences, too, in the assessing office. They work very closely anyways, as building permits are sent there and they're sent back. And the assessor's already managing to review how much megawatts are created, because that's how he assesses it in general. If he notices a substantial amount above a, a frame rate, I assume that they could probably have that, uh, a discussion.
Do you believe Mike Jasmine wants to say something?
Yes, Mike.
Is he muted?
No, we can't hear you.
I think he's muted.
Your audience.
He's not muted from my end. Might be muted from his end. Mike? Mike, are you muted from your end?
Oh, jeez.
Tell him.
Yeah, cut the, cut, cut through it, Mike.
Let me give him a ring. I'll follow him. Come on, speaker.
This is the problem that I've said all along with, with Zoom.
But he didn't come on and say, can you hear me?
I don't care.
Oh, he's calling. He's calling.
Hello, can you reach the phone of Mike?
Hello, Mike?
Yeah, I'm actually not muted. I don't know what the problem is.
Okay, you're live.
Turn off the solar panels.
Yeah, it's off. So this, this whole process is governed by the D N C and the utility and the rest of that very, very rigidly. When somebody gets a solar array to their home, they check the number of years worth of bills, and they're only allowed to produce twenty-five percent more than what they currently use. That's, that's just the law. They can't, in a residential array, you can't produce more than twenty-five percent of your usage. And that's done because in the, in the, in the, the months when you can make more than you use, they're hoping that's enough to get you through the wear. It generally isn't, but it helps offset it. So the idea that, that there's more being produced, that there's some potential grand, you know, stream of income or something like that, it doesn't exist. You're only allowed to produce twenty-five percent more than what you use, which is why when, 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 when the, the, the lease people in particular use more, that's when they really take a beating on these things. So they're the ones that are getting beat up even more, but that's side stuff. So the idea that there's more money being made, or they can put in a giant array, and then, it, it, that's, it's just not the case.
Thank God.
Good job.
Where were you a couple of weeks ago?
I should have gone there, I apologize, Billy.
Yeah, you should.
You were here. You must have left, or maybe you weren't.
I think she's still in the tunnel, I don't know.
What's that?
He's sitting in a tunnel right now.
Oh, he's in a tunnel.
You know what? Mike, he has, because he's on an iPad. Mike, he has iPad, doesn't have a.
Okay, well, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate the clarity.
Just, just think, this, this could have shortened our discussion.
But we know a lot more about.
Dramatically.
We've learned a lot of things about solar.
Actually, I've enforced a capability.
We have enforced a capability. We have the, of course, the building permit that explains it. Obviously, the P U C watches it with its twenty-five percent cap. I, I think that's, well, I guess that, in my mind, would, would limit the, the commercial side on a residential law.
So you want a hundred percent exemption?
Yeah, that's it. That's the proposed. It's congruent with a lot of the other communities in the neighborhood, neighborhood region, and, uh, I think ultimately would allow us to really serve those in the community that are not only using or planning putting in solar panels, but also incentivizes it as well. So essentially making Swan, uh, Swansea's drain on the electrical grid less, less than, I guess.
I would like to see some kind of monthly report from code or building that.
On new, new permits?
Yeah, how much the permit is, and the assessed value of the property. Just so we can keep an eye on it. If there's a question, we will be asking, or I will be asking for enforcement or investigation on it, because a forty thousand dollar home shouldn't be having a seventy-five thousand dollar addition not being taxed.
It's in for you, so.
You're on it.
On it. Good job.
Hey, Julius.
Two for two, Ken.
My only concern about this whole thing is that it's taken, it's taken forever to get to this point. And I don't, I don't think that, that it should have taken beating a dead horse.
All right. So you need a, you need a motion with libra?
It's fine. Sorry, I'll drop one.
And it's going to be a warrant or a court?
Current.
Oh, may I ask, is it a hundred percent?
Yes.
Is that what you, okay, thank you.
Twenty-two-one Carpenter Home withdrawal request.
Table.
Preparations for the budget hearing.
As needed. We gave you the updated, sent out the updated budget with the increases we discussed last meeting reflected. Uh, gave you the updated warrant, which did end up, we were able to combine those veterans' credits that we talked about last week, so that, um, cut down our numbers again. Um, we'll add one in for the item we just, um, talked about for the on-call staffing. Um, no other, I didn't make any other changes other than entering in the budget and the, no, it's not, the budget and the default. I guess it's been moved in, but. That, the numbers are in there now.
So will we, before the public hearing, get the filings, or are you just going to send them out, or?
Yeah, we usually meet at five-thirty, and then the hearing starts at six. Yeah, I can resend out, uh, with those reflections.
Thank you. Are they coming in color? It's a lot easier for me to read.
The budget sheets?
Well, these came out, but the ones I printed out, they, they.
Not those.
Yeah, exactly. But this is, the gray, I can't hardly even pick up on. This was off your, off of, off of the packet.
Because I think it was a colored PDF that then tried to print in black and white. Yeah. But they, is this, is this, is this accepted? Yeah. So I'll, I'll have those then.
You want this one or another?
Is that, was that in the packet?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll do it. Administrative update, anything? Correspondence?
Nothing to report at this time.
Non-publics?
No.
Julius is doing a heck of a job. It's amazing how many times your name shows up. Holy cow.
Look at the guy. He should be more credited than he deserves, but.
Take it while you can. The blame will come too.
So I think it adjourned.
What time is it?
Option to adjourn is on.
Six eighteen.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Josh.